Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. This Tuesday, May 17th. I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, we do have a cancellation, number three, this morning, the juvenile counselor position.
Move approval with correction.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the amended agenda, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Citizens to be heard this morning. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything not on the agenda? Any citizens? Steve, have you had any correspondence in regards to this item?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our next item this morning is the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve the bills by Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. The minutes are presented in the packet from May 3rd.
Move approval.
A motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Campbell. A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Proclamation. Proclamation for Law Enforcement Week. Sheriff, did you want to say anything before we go through this?
First and foremost, I'd just like to thank the board for all their support to law enforcement in the sheriff's office over the past, how many years? I mean, the board has been very supportive, so that's very much appreciated. This is a time where we recognize our law enforcement officers that did not make it home. So to have the proclamation by the county board is very much appreciated by all the staff at the sheriff's office and I'm sure the families of those officers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
This week is particularly important to me. During my career, prior to coming to Morehead, where we've lost an officer, a far-right officer several years ago, Officer Moser, I had lost five of my comrades with Little Rock Police Department during my tenure there. And last night, I had the opportunity to go to a wellness seminar that the Morehead Police Department put on for their officers. And Matt Langley, the commander of the Minnesota State Patrol, was there and he did a presentation. And retired Officer Thad Stafford did an amazing presentation. And it just reminds me how phenomenal the men and women we have that provide these services to us in this country, but particularly in this county, are. This is the best group of law enforcement officers I've worked with, and I've worked with a lot of different agencies. And we are lucky to have the deputies and the police officers that we've got here. And we need to remember the sacrifice they make. This area does a good job of supporting their law enforcement officers. And I just want to be assured that nobody's fooling them. These people are worth our support, and this week, we want to remember them. And say prayers for the families and for the souls of those that we've lost. And it's with COVID, there's been a phenomenal number of officers who died in the line of duty this year. And it needs to remind us just how, what sacrifices they and their families make for us. Thanks.
Thank you. This board's ability to have proclamations like this is, I think, really important. Certainly, we all have so much appreciation for all the folks that do so many different things within our county, but to specifically acknowledge certain groups of folks that go above and beyond is really an honor to be able to do that. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation and then look for the board's approval. Whereas Clay County is represented by law enforcement officers from the Morehead Police Department, Dilworth Police Department, Glendon Police Department, Barnesville Police Department, Holly Police Department, and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. And whereas, members of law enforcement play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in our community. And whereas, every day throughout our nation, men and women in uniform selflessly put their lives on the line, many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities. And whereas, law enforcement officers bravely and selflessly risk their lives to protect our community from dangerous and uncertain situations through their faithful, loyal, and dedicated service. And whereas, acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens for our officers provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the intense situations that they face every day. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st as Law Enforcement Appreciation Week in Clay County, and we urge all citizens to join us to honor those men and women who are serving and have served valiantly and courageously to make Clay County a better place to live, work, and raise a family.
Move the proclamation.
Commissioner Campbell makes a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
I just, you know, I thank you, Commissioner Ebinger, for your comments too, and Sheriff, regarding Law Enforcement Week. And I, this year, it seems to me, we're having a few more than usual of our Clay County deputies hitting that time in their life where they're going to move on, and we're thankful for them. I just talked to somebody downstairs, who I think is, next month is, is that individual's last day. And so a special thank you to those law enforcement officers in our county who are choosing this year to be the end of their career. Thank them for their service. And anytime you, we have somebody go out, there's always new ones coming in, and this is a good time to also welcome them and say to them that they have our support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So last week was, we encouraged folks to wear red and support our EMS and first responders in fire. And then I believe with this proclamation, we'll encourage you to wear either brown to support our sheriff's office or blue to support law enforcement. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Item two this morning is a request for proposal for medical services for the juvenile center and correctional facility. We have Carrie and James with.
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
And the board. As you're aware, we sent out an RFP, which was a request for proposal to provide healthcare services for both the jail and the correctional, and the juvenile center. We received two proposals back. One proposal was from our current provider, Mend Correctional. That total that they bid to the whole county was $1,273,800. The other proposal we got was from Advanced Correctional Healthcare. That proposal was $1,217,287. The ACH proposal, which is Advanced Correctional Healthcare, is the cheaper of the two. Also, they responded in their RFP more completely. They answered all the questions that we needed, provided documentation, extensive documentation, and they're able to work with, for the juvenile center specifically, on some other four-year eligibility type of stuff that we might need for social services. And that's quite important.
We did have a pick committee meeting in regards to this last week, so I'm not quite sure if the board has any further documents than what you just read off. I think it is really important that the board understands that there were two proposals, and the second proposal that we, actually, the lower of the proposal, the in-depth planning and availability to address the substantial needs that come up, a wide variety of substantial needs, I think far exceeds what the other provider is doing. And understanding that we're in a time when we're seeing increases in all of our services, I think we went into the seeking of the RFP knowing that we likely would have to come to the table with more money. But I really do think the holistic package that ACH has is far and above even the services that we're able to provide currently. And historically, this board has been really, has really been driven to provide not only medical services, but mental health services and address those needs in the most timely fashion possible. And certainly, we did that with the buildings. We made sure to implement certain aspects of those buildings that could help address those needs. And I think by approving the RFP for ACH, it really would help us provide that in a far more efficient manner. Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, just to go over a little bit, follow up on the conversations we had at PIC. Obviously, both of these contracts exceed what we had anticipated for, for the 2022 budget. But I, you know, in talking about what the additional cost would be for 2022, I, you know, James, in terms of the regional juvenile center, the additional cost is, could be well-absorbed within the current budget structure with the increased revenues we're receiving. On the correctional side, that's also a fairly significant increase. However, when you look back at this past year, the budget amount and payroll is down considerably because we weren't able to do some of our hiring that we desperately needed. In addition, in addition to that, and it goes to Commissioner Ebinger, one of your comments too, was we wanted to make sure that that difference and the difference that, the difference in expense that we had to do in sending inmates out on a temporary basis, there still was a significant savings in payroll over those costs to the sheriff's budget for 2022. And I think the sheriff will report too that thankfully, with the work of our, of our current jail administration, we have all of those inmates back here now, so we don't have to have those expenses. So, so to pay for it for 2022, I think, I think we're in good shape there. That doesn't say that 2023 is going to bring in some new challenges for us that we're going to have to be considering, but certainly, going back to the ACH proposal really seems the best fit for us.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes, we had a presentation at the AMC conference we were at earlier this year in the Public Safety Committee. We had Dakota County Sheriff and his command staff there, and I had a chance to talk to them after their presentation. And they had been using the same vendor who also bid on this, Mend, and had had similar experiences with them as we have. They went in and rebid it, and ACH got the bid from them. And the sheriff and his jail administration people said they'd been very happy with the results. So I think, given the kind of tumultuous times we have, both in healthcare and in corrections and in public safety, you're going to have to pay. I mean, the price has gone up, and we're obligated to make sure that people in our facilities, both juvenile and the correctional facility, get the best possible care. And I think this is something that's worth the cost.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you. You know, no matter which facility folks are staying with us at, they're there because something's not going right in where they were before. And so it's really important that while they're with us, we're doing everything we can so that they leave better off than when they came to us, be that their physical health, their mental health, giving them the supports that they need to be more successful when they leave. And so this seems like the best path forward, going with ACH, to ensure that we have the proper resources and tools to address some of those needs.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We also had the conversation, so these, the two contracts that we have, the one with the regional juvenile center and the one with the correctional facility, they're actually, they actually fall due a month apart. I guess, I guess what, what I am interested in seeing us do, and, and I would, I guess I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair, that we move forward with the, developing a contract with ACH based on the RFPs, and that we have our county attorney review and to determine the soonest possible date that this could be implemented. That being said, ideally, it would be nice to get them to both fall due at the same time, as opposed to in the past being a month apart. So, Madam Chair, that would be my motion.
Second.
There is a motion on the table to accept the low bid of the RFP for medical services for the correctional facility and juvenile facility by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebinger, with direction to work with our legal services to make sure that we're able to find a date and start date that works for both parties. Does that make sense?
Does that, could that kind of cover?
That, yeah, that I believe covered everything from the PIC meeting that we had the other day.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate your joint collaboration. Item four would be our next item on the agenda this morning. A report and recommendation on disbursements from Compliance Fund Committee. Our recorder, Kimberly Savage-O, good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today to report on the compliance fund for the recorders' office. Under Minnesota statute, we have, we must return at least 90% of our recordable documents within 10 business days. Our office has met those standards that are laid out in statute, and since we're in compliance, the county board is authorized to use the dollars in that fund to support the recording process and data integration projects. The compliance committee met the beginning of May, and we have a recommendation that we use $105,000 from the compliance fund in the 2023 budget for tax system maintenance, the corner remonumentation program, fund for information services, and software maintenance for the assessor's office. This $105,000 would be the same that we have used in the years past. So I would be looking for approval today of that $105,000, and then I have a second request after that.
Commissioner Ebinger, I believe, serves on that committee, so I'll have him comment.
It's just two points. First of all, Ms. Savage-O did a, has done her usual stellar job at keeping us in compliance. And that was a little easier this year, I think, than the year before, but not an easy task any year. And I think we should be grateful for that. Also, the committee and the discussions on this did recommend we move forward with these expenditures.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Any further questions? Commissioner Campbell?
So do we, Kimberly, do we have, so the $105,000 for 2023, are those line items pretty consistent with what we've done in the past?
Yes.
They're pretty much the same per line item?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the request, if I'm following correctly, then is, you're actually suggesting another $20,000 for 2022 to go to the monument?
Yes, that's my second request today, to use fund balance in 2022. The compliance fund has grown significantly these last two years because of our increase of recordings, and so the balance is sitting a little higher than I would like it to. We've reached out to our engineer at AE2S, and they can provide another $20,000 in corner remonumentation work, and so we were hoping to use some of the compliance funds to help push that project a little further along.
I think that's a great idea.
Yes, Steve?
And, Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, to your, to your point, question too, also in working with Lori, in utilizing the funds in 2022, it doesn't show up on the 2023 budget, which would impact the levy. And so it's a win-win by doing it mid, mid, mid-year.
Any questions on that?
The only other thing I, I would request is, once we, once we approve these, that we get, we get an update from, from that surveyor on where we're at with the process. And, you know, we, at some, one point, we, we were told we still had a significant number of monuments to get. I'm just curious where we're, where we're at and how much of that were.
Yeah, the, I think Mark Sloan will give an update on that during his board presentation. We did have a meeting with them, and we started in the southeast corner of the county, which was one of the most difficult areas to retrieve corners. But as we move west, we anticipate that they will move farther.
Are we still in that southeast corner? Probably.
Yes, yep, I believe we are.
Yeah, it's a big area.
It is. Lot of terrain to cover.
Very good.
Any further questions for Kimberly? If not, there is, we don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, I would, I would move that we use the recommended funds out of the Recorder Compliance Fund.
Second.
Motion to approve the request, a second by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Madam, was that a separate motion then for the, I think we need a second motion for the $20,000?
Probably should, yes.
Because the first motion was for 2023.
Perfect.
Okay, yes, yep.
And so then, I'd also move that we, we take an additional amount from the fund balance in the Recorder Compliance Fund to go towards additional dollars for the corner surveys.
Yes, correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are a little ahead of schedule, and I think we need to have nine o'clock, correct? Do any, any of you have committee reports readily available? I got it. Yes? Commissioner Kaylee, thank you.
Thank you. Last week, on Wednesday, I attended the Cass-Clay Food Commission meeting. We had a very busy schedule. We started with a conversation about the food pantry situation and increased costs that everyone is seeing. Jenna's tweet from Great Plains Food Bank presented, and she talked about freight costs are up 31%. A truckload of food, as compared to last year, is up 65% to what they were seeing. There's increased fuel costs and food shortages, decreased product availability. So there's just this confluence of a variety of factors contributing to the increased costs that food pantries are seeing. I asked what, what we as decision-makers and leaders in the community can do to help alleviate some of that stress. And the response was, we just need to donate food and money and time. Grow an extra row in your garden and donate that produce this summer. Our master gardeners always have drop-off locations throughout our communities, so if you are a home gardener, think about planting an extra row or two, and then you can bring food to those drop-off locations quite easily this summer. And Jenna said she's available to answer more questions if we have more. There was also a report from the Cass County Master Gardeners on their Garden Palooza event. Sounds like that was really well-attended and a great event for everyone. Crystal Ryamaji gave a report on her work as the new Morehead Sustainability Coordinator. She's been involved in a ton of projects already. And Forrest from Morehead gave a report on Morehead's comprehensive plan and applicable sections to the group in that plan. For example, making food for us throughout Morehead, some of the plantings that they're doing, and work that they've done on Boulevard Gardens.
Commissioner Kaylee, I have a question about Cass-Clay Food, if I may.
Yeah.
During the COVID shutdowns, the food partners took a really active stance in making sure that they got information out to what was available and how you could, you know, pick, order food or pick up non-contact. I'm wondering if the crisis in baby food or baby formula is something that would meet that threshold of additional food partner's response? I know it's kind of the non-traditional food aspect, but I've heard we're at critical levels with availability. I know that Noel Harden was great in lifting that, so maybe that's a discussion point.
Yeah, I could bring that up. It wasn't, it was mentioned that there is a shortage, and the food pantries are seeing that as well, and they're trying to get in whatever they can to make available for those families. But we can have further discussion on that.
Thank you.
Then Thursday, the Clay County Collaborative met, and we took a look at the budget, as well as approving contracts. Several years ago, programs took an 18% cut to their budgets due to a lack of funding. And what we approved at that meeting was giving all of those programs a 5% increase. That was the most that we felt comfortable being able to do with the money that we had available this year. So we're hoping to work towards getting back to where we had been, funding levels we had been at in the past. And, yeah.
Okay.
Working to provide more, more programs for our kids in mental health through that work there. Then Saturday, we had, our Early Childhood Initiative had Kids Fest, and there was a last-minute venue change. The water was too high at Gooseberry Park, so we could not have an event for small children with the river 10 feet away from the shelter we planned to be at. So we moved that to the parking lot of the Morehead Public Library. Thank you to them for hosting that event and all the resources that they provided for that. And it was very well-attended. I, our estimate is we had over 900 people show up to learn about resources that we have available in our community and to play outside, and it was just a really wonderful time. It felt like a slightly smaller version of the street fair. So, thank you to everybody who participated. There was lots of volunteers, lots of agencies that came out and just provided a really wonderful morning for our families with small children. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. We, I think, have about a minute and a half, so we might as well get situated with the next piece, our public hearing. We won't open it till nine, but, yep. We have Ezra Bear this morning with us, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Matt Jacobson and Adam Altenberg from MetroCog. Well, this, seems like this has been a really heavy lift in terms of timing because we decided to go forward with this. decided to go forward with this and then a pandemic hit. And it was challenging to get, to figure out how to do that with public hearings, but you really did a great job, I will say that. I recall being in meetings all over the county, north and south and in the center, and making sure that we went to the people to make sure they had an opportunity to speak on this. And I really think what we have before us is a plan that has been thought of in so many different ways, from receiving only virtual comments to in-person comments to email correspondence and, as we'll see later, last-minute comments from the DNR. I think that we really did our best to make sure we gave people every opportunity to weigh in on this because this is such a great document as we move forward. So I'll pitch it to you, Matt, if you want to go ahead. Actually, it's 9:01, so we're ready to open the public hearing.
Move to open?
Yes. We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to open the public hearing, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are open, Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and we're here. Very excited to bring this plan before you. Just want to step back and thank Adam Altenberg and MetroCog for all their hard and diligent work on this. This truly is a very detailed and comprehensive plan in all senses of the word, which is great. And I want to thank our Planning Commission Chair Ezra Baer and also past Chair Bill Davis as well, because he drove a lot of this. And then also all the members of our Study Review Committee, which consisted of county staff and county commissioners and planning commissioners and Board of Adjustment members. So a lot of eyes went into this plan, a lot of hard work, so very much appreciated. So with that, I think I'm just going to give you a kind of overview of the plan, where we're at. And just for the public's benefit, what the purpose of a comprehensive plan is, why we go through the exercise of doing one, why it's so important. And so that's kind of where I will begin. So a comprehensive plan, and I'm going to try and go through this as quickly as possible, provides a shared vision for the community and it's also a policy framework that guides public and private decision-making. Taking a long-range look at various topics that impact the county's character, preservation, growth, fiscal condition. It's really difficult to take that long-range look, you know, 20, 25 years out because as you stated, Madam Chair, when we got into this, we didn't know there's going to be a global pandemic and that wasn't something that we really planned for. And so developing a plan that's nimble and able to be adapted easily, I think was really crucial in developing this plan. So we started last January 2021. Our current plan that we're operating under was adopted in 2002. And I will say the first plan, I believe, was adopted in 1980. So it's followed a roughly 20-year timeframe for updates. There is a statutory basis for comprehensive planning, county comprehensive planning. The first one, 394.21, is the authority, gives the counties the authority for counties to carry on planning and zoning activities. And this is what falls under the police powers of the state and really what the purpose is, is for promoting the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community in the sense Clay County is that community. And then within Chapter 394, there is an authority for counties to prepare and adopt comprehensive plans. And in greater Minnesota, there is also a statute that counties in greater Minnesota, not in that seven-county metropolitan area, should consider adopting goals and policies that kind of achieve the following, would be minimizing the fragmentation development of agricultural forest, wildlife, and open-spaced lands, minimizing development in sensitive shoreline areas, minimizing development near wildlife management areas, scientific and natural areas, nature centers, encouraging compatible land uses in airport safety zones that are compatible with the safe operation of an airport, identify areas for higher-density development, and then also encouraging development close to places of employment, shopping centers, schools, mass transit, and other public and private service sectors. And I think our plan accomplishes all of these goals by recognizing that the rural and agricultural character of Clay County in our plan goals, also acknowledging that there's very rich natural resources in Clay County. And then also, the plan does do some work in identifying our counties, communities as great places to live and work and really kind of lifting up those cities as good places to raise a family or have a home or as places of employment as well. So we need this plan because this provides our tool for growth and development in the county. And it also gives community members the opportunity to participate in that development of a vision for the county in providing input into the plan, in providing input into future land use ordinances and controls as well. The plan will provide justification for zoning, other land development decisions, and then also more broadly will help in applying for state, federal grants. I think this is where it can particularly help out some of our county departments that don't necessarily, will never really need this plan or look at this plan, but there could be some opportunities there to say, oh, what we're trying to do is furthering a goal of the county. So I'm going to just actually jump ahead here. We did a lot of community engagement. We had a number of virtual and in-person public meetings. We had focus groups with different stakeholder groups in the county, whether it be agricultural producers, aggregate operators, public safety, higher education, just to name a few, economic development as well. We got, we reached out to the townships, we reached out to the cities in Clay County. We also reached out to state agencies as well. And then we also had meetings with different department heads in Clay County government. So I will get to the main event here, which is the plan. The plan is comprehensive. It contains the following chapters. And I'll kind of go through each of these chapters just briefly as we go along here. So the first is the community profile, and this is what kind of provides the baseline for the county. It gives you that baseline data in terms of demographics and things of that nature, as well as some projections into the future. One interesting projection is, you know, we always hear about how Clay County is one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. And you can see that is kind of, you can see that in this graph here and how rapidly it's growing and how rapidly it will grow into the future. I mean, we plan on, we anticipate having 90,000 residents by 2045, so adding an additional 25,100 residents in the next 25 years, which is pretty remarkable. In terms of population, we are also able to identify where population growth is happening. A lot of it is happening in our cities, but also a lot of our townships are experiencing growth too, especially in the southeast and then kind of in the north, north-central as well. We're seeing a lot of residential growth in those townships. And we anticipate that that growth will continue into the future, especially with trends in remote work and just that a lot of our county, we're blessed with a lot of really scenic areas and that people want to live in and live close to. Housing is also a hot topic. So most of the housing type in Clay County, well, 2/3 of it is single-family homes. A lot of, a good portion of it, it was built in between 1970 and 1999. And in the next 25 years, it's estimated that we'll need an additional 10,505 housing units in Clay County. As our population is growing, 25,000 people need housing to meet that demand as well. Agriculture is a huge part of Clay County in terms of our economy and just socially and really envelops all kind of aspects of life in Clay County. Farmland accounts for about 80% of the land area in the county. One trend that's been noted is that the number of farms is decreasing while the average acreage has been increasing, and this mirrors national trends. The next section would be land use. Trying to think about how to make wise land use decisions that fit in with the goals and the objectives and sort of the vision for Clay County. And one thing that the Study Review Committee and the Planning Commission come up with was some guiding principles for land use. So looking at land use decisions that provide a balance, that are collaborative in terms of working with maybe landowners, working with townships, working with cities that foster growth, that provide economic resilience and that also are connective and that they are connecting in terms not only physically through maybe like transportation, but also socially, economically, mentally, all those things. So one thing that we looked at in the county was, and this is not something that I'm going to go into detail here, but you can certainly find it in the plan, is just looking at how land use has changed in terms of assessment from 2010 to 2021. We've seen a lot of residential growth in the county, a lot of commercial growth in the county, a lot less rural vacant land in the county as well. And so this is an interesting map and this is something that we'll have up to at the Government Center. If you want to take a closer look at it, we have it blown up. So you can really see kind of how, at a really fine scale, land use in Clay County. One thing that, another thing in keeping with the kind of, the guiding principles for land use in Clay County, one thing that the Study Review Committee and the Planning Commission looked at was looking at growth and how growth could proceed over the next 25 years in Clay County. And they kind of looked at three alternatives for guiding growth in the county, one being pursuing a restrictive growth in land use pattern. That's where you have really, you really tight land use controls, zoning districts that are very specific. You know, there's some positives to that in that it, you know, really, really minimizes land use conflicts would be the big positive. The negative to that is there's not a lot of flexibility for landowners in developing their property. The second alternative would be to pursue a balanced growth, land use pattern. So, and then also looked at an unrestricted growth, land use pattern, where basically, let's have no zoning, let's not have any official controls at all and see how that goes. And so what the Study Review Committee and the Planning Commission chose is to kind of strike that middle ground and providing, pursuing a balanced growth, land use pattern, where you can take into consideration like urban expansion, so how cities grow, and making sure that that happens in an orderly and efficient manner, protecting agriculture, letting, giving landowners some options and developers some options and developing their land. And then also just having more economic growth activities. So when opportunities come available, you're not, and it's a reasonable opportunity in the eyes of the Planning Commission or the County Board, you're not restricted by your own plan or your own land use controls. So there are some cons to that, just because there's still some land use conflicts that might happen, especially between agriculture or other industry that operates in Clay County and then residential uses as well. There's still some restrictions on what a landowner can and cannot do with their property. But again, looking at, through the lens of being reasonable. The next section is transportation. So this is a good section, just provides a lot of information about the road system in Clay County and MetroCog has a really great job with this. They had a lot of, they have a lot of data and wealth of knowledge and expertise that they can tap into, as well as our County Highway Department. And I really just want to thank Dave Overbow and then Justin Sorm, who both did a really nice job and provided a lot of good information and input on this part of the plan. Looking at things like bridge sufficiency, where we can target our infrastructure upgrades in the future, looking at bicycle and pedestrian network, looking at where we have that infrastructure now, where there might be opportunities in the future, and then also emerging technologies. So looking at different types of technologies in the transportation space that are kind of coming to bear, some that we could see being a thing in the future, looking at, and that we are seeing right now, like microtransits, mobility as a service. So those types of rideshare type of technologies that can assist people who maybe are homebound that need to, that live in rural Clay County and need to get into the FM area or Barnesville or Holly or Saban for an appointment or Aaron's or whatever. Looking at how freight might move differently through the county and then how these might impact land use, safety, and then traffic congestion as well. Now getting kind of into the heart of the plan would be the vision goals and the objectives. So these are essentially, this is the, what we want as a community, Clay County, to be like. And this was, the vision statement was guided by these issues and opportunities that were identified by members of the public through community engagement activities and came up with this vision statement. And I'll just read it here. "Clay County values its existing rural and agricultural character. While ensuring a thoughtful, balanced approach to growth and development in the years to come, Clay County is committed to the principles of equity, inclusion, and service by providing quality services and facilities for all citizens and future residents. Clay County recognizes the importance of its agricultural and natural resources while looking for new opportunities to support economic vitality. Clay County will promote sound planning principles that foster economic, environmental, and community resiliency to ensure that Clay County thrives into 2045 and beyond." So that is kind of the overall vision statement for Clay County and kind of serves as that overarching guide for all decisions, decision-making. And so to meet that vision, there's a series of goals and objectives that were developed. We looked at the past plan, we looked at the issues and opportunities that we heard from the community, the issues and opportunities that we heard from state agencies, taking kind of all that information into consideration, what we heard from focus groups, to come up with a set of goals and objectives. And these are just the categories. The first category would be community and resilience. We have goals related to housing, land use, transportation, agriculture, natural resources in the environment, economic development, and intergovernmental coordination. So these are really going to be the heart of the plan. These will be the, what the, for example, the Planning Commission and you as a board when making zoning decisions will rely on as part of your findings for those decisions. Then finally, we have implementation, looking at how the plan will be implemented. Typically, that's done through development. The next step would be to develop a land development code, a new code. Looking at our zoning as well. Those are kind of the two main ways that a comprehensive plan is implemented. There are other ways that it can be implemented too as well, and that's directing funding to meet specific goals of the plan, goals and objectives of the plan as well. So it's not all just regulatory, but there are other ways to, that goals and objectives of the plan. And ultimately, the vision of the plan can be accomplished. So, but in terms of ordinances, we have our land use, floodplain, shoreland, renewable energy, agriculture. And then just saying, in terms of agriculture, a lot of that is like right-to-farm nuisance type laws. The floodplain and the shoreland, a lot of that comes almost verbatim from the state of Minnesota. They have their shoreland and floodplain programs, and they have developed model ordinances that we as a county can use and have used in the past. And then we do have an implementation guide that's kind of at the end of the plan, just looking at different programs that might be available, different funding sources that might be available, different actions that might be taken to meet specific goals in our plan. And this is not necessarily all-inclusive, this could be amended at any point, but this is kind of your, a general guide, or kind of our first place to look for, oh, how can we best address or accomplish this goal? So after a plan's adopted, the hope is that this doesn't just sit on a shelf. We'd like this to be a dynamic planning document that is adaptable, that is flexible, that is malleable as things change. And how we can do that is, we can look at either reviewing it in one or five-year, one, two, or five-year interval, intervals, look at how plan tools in the implementation guide, for example, have been utilized, and if we're making any progress towards goals and objectives. I will just say that we did get some additional comments from the DNR yesterday, and thanks, Rita, for printing them out. A lot of them are just very minor, and I think we can just, we can just include them in the body of the plan. There are some others that would have been good to consider when we were talking about goals and objectives perhaps. And I think too, that a lot of our goals and objectives do already kind of address some of these comments, just maybe not so specifically. And so we do have in our plan appendices, a spot for comments that we've received, and I would, my recommendation would be to, I already kind of have a document typed up that has all these comments, and we could just stick that in the appendices with the other comments that we received as well, if that's...
I think that's a fair way to address it. I do know that we've had meetings with stakeholders, and environment stakeholders were a meeting we did have, and DNR was present, and they certainly have been part of the discussion. But making sure that some of these additional ones that maybe they don't feel were exactly addressed, having it in an appendices is certainly...
Yep.
Because last night, when I got this after 10 o'clock last night, I did make sure and read through this, and I do feel like the general consensus of their concerns have really been brought forward and addressed, making sure that we're addressing their concerns in regards to the environment certainly have been addressed.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, absolutely. I think we have some pretty strong plan goals and objectives that address these. And I'll also add too that we are also partners in the two comprehensive watershed management plans in our county, the Buffalo Red River Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan and the Wild Rice Plan. And in our plan, this county plan would support the, those two plans and the goals and the strategies that are laid out in those plans as well. And a lot of those, the goals and the strategies in those plans address a lot of these comments too, so.
Mr. Baer, do you have anything to add?
The only thing, Madam Chair, I want to add is, thanks Matt for all his hard work that him and his staff has put on through this, because it, we did start this at the pandemic, and I mean, it was a lot of work to meet all those groups and get all that information in, so I'd just like to thank Matt. The Planning, the Planning Commission did make a motion to approve this for you guys, so.
All right. Thank you, and Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, on something like this, it's, I kind of like to give a little historical perspective at times, and I'm going to throw one out here today. So going back into the early 2000s and beyond that even, Clay County always was very concerned about protecting our ag resources. That's always been the case. At the same point in time, early on, there was conflict with that. That and, I'm going to, I'm going to use Commissioner Mojo, but I'm not going to call her Commissioner Mojo, I'm going to call her Jenny, from when she was younger and, you know, just like a lot of our people who grew up in some of these rural areas. They leave and they go, they leave their home, rural home that they grew up in, and they go off to school, they go off to college, and then a lot of them really get smart there and they realize what better place to raise a family than to come back to Clay County. And when they come back to Clay County, sometimes our own rules and regulations got in the way of them being able to move back into the rural setting that they wanted. And so, you know, we made some adjustments to allow for, so Matt, when you talked a little bit earlier about townships also growing, some of that is for that reason, that we then made some changes that allowed for maybe a little bit more residential opportunities. I don't want to call them subdivisions, but a split where you could have some additional home in a certain number of acres. I think, I think we dropped the number of acres before, from before. But that's really important, you know, somebody who grows up in the rural area and they want to come back, and if we don't have a place for them to live in that, in the setting that they grew up in, you're not, you know, the likelihood of them coming back isn't going to be there. So that's where, that's where I really like the idea and the thought of alternative number two. Because our goal obviously is to retain as much of our ag and other natural resources that we have, but to also be considerate of the fact that, from an economic standpoint and a historical perspective, that we have people who want to come back and live in the areas that they grew up in. And so I think, I think we've gone a long way in improving that, and I think what this group has done has really allowed that to continue in this, in this plan document. So thank you, Ezra, thank you to you as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and to your Planning Commission group for the, Commissioner Mojo and I sat in on some of these with everybody here, and it was a lot of time, a lot of time went into this document, and very much, the work is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes, this week I had some circumstances where I had a number of hours where I would sit and wait, and so I said, gee, this'd be a great time to read the comprehensive plan, and I got my highlighter out, and I started reading it. And all of a sudden, I realized I was highlighting almost all of it, and I put the highlighter down and kept reading it. As somebody that's lived and been part of local government in this county for almost two decades, I thought I knew stuff. I've been a commissioner for, what is it now, 17 months? I thought I knew stuff. This addresses in a very focused and comprehensive way, so much detail about where we need to go and how we're going to get there, that it ought to be a primer for anybody that wants to develop farm, build a business, hold a public office, in, deal with transportation. It's just a really great piece of work, and I want to compliment you gentlemen and everybody else. And Commissioner Mojo, you as Chair of the Planning, this is, this is so useful to set the perspective in a county that's not only growing fast, but when the diversion is finished, we're going to see, I think, unprecedented growth, and we're going to have to be flexible. We're going to, you know, Model Two, in what you identified is where we need to be. We can keep our rural and our agricultural and our natural assets and still meet the needs of a growing metro area. This is just a thoughtful document. I'm very impressed and very pleased with it, and I'm grateful, because this has reframed a lot of things that I thought I knew and I didn't. But you do owe me for a new highlighter. But thank you for the work that went into this.
You.
Commissioner Kaylee?
You guys have said it all, but yeah, I just want to repeat my thanks, and I've said it before, this is an extremely well-thought-out, well-put-together document, the way that you included input from citizens and interested entities and stuff. It's just, it worked out beautifully, and I think it will, it will do well to help set us on the right path for development in the years ahead. Thank you.
I think that it's important for the public to understand when items of interest come before the, say, Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission, sometimes it appears as though we're not appearing flexible to a situation. I think the vision of this document will really allow that to work, you know, I call, we call them conflicts sometimes in terms of land use conflicts, but I really think they're opportunities, because Clay County is so unique in terms of, it is areas that are so entrenched in rural identity and some of the most fertile ground in the world, really. And you have this beach ridge that has a huge environmental asset, but also aggregate asset in terms of building. That's a reason that we're building so quickly, is we have readily available commodity, but also are part of a really fast-growing quarter-million-population metro. And so we really have, I think, the best of both worlds, because you can either live in a metro or live rural or somewhere in between, and I think that when we do have these applications before the Planning and Board of Adjustment, this will allow us to be more flexible. And the reason we are growing quickly, I believe, is because we need to be flexible in a certain, certain way, just because a huge business proposal may not fit 100% into what our vision was 10 years ago. Does that mean it's not a viable project to think about going forward? I think having these issues identified will help us kind of mitigate that issue. Certainly with our committee portfolios, I can't think of one committee that I sit on that won't benefit from the ideas and issues identified in this document. I really think that the whole gamut of them apply anywhere, from schools with our kids and to transportation, to transporting commodities, to identifying environments, environmental concerns. I really do think this identifies all of it. I'm scratching my head to think of something that isn't identified in this document, so thank you. I'm excited for this to go forward, and I'm excited for us to continue to use this as a living document, so to speak, and use it as a guide for future growth going forward. Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I will, what we'll do, I do, we do have a draft ordinance to adopt this plan, and that's in front of you and up on your screens, and it's a, I know it's a very comprehensive plan, and one of the things we want to do is kind of chop it up a little bit, put it, section it out, and get it on our website as soon as possible so people can start putting it to use and get that going. Big thanks to Rita and Erica too, for helping with all that and keeping, keeping things going with this plan, couldn't have done it without them, so.
Thank you. Any members of the public wishing to speak on the plan today? In terms of correspondence, either Steve or Matt, have you had any requests to speak on this today? Any other comment from the board?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. This might be something that we've already addressed, but because this has taken so long, bear with me for a moment, we did have, as noted, a comprehensive plan committee that was separate from the Planning Commission, separate from any other commission, and I recall, but refresh my, refresh my memory, did we make sure and provide per diems to the folks that spent time doing that? We do have attendance list, okay, I'm getting...
Madam Chair, we did.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that folks were compensated for the time that they put in on that. Any other comments? We do have ordinance 22-2, is that the first item that you want action on, or do you want the full plan first?
This ordinance would, I believe, in effect, adopt the full plan.
Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner Kaylee?
Do we need to make any changes to this with the idea that the DNR comments would be added to the appendices?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, that I am not sure about. I think maybe just the fact that we've discussed them and we will be adding them, would that be enough?
I'm looking at Brian, and I know Commissioner Campbell has a comment.
I think probably so. I think without having to make a formal motion, especially knowing, I think, what Matt recommended of taking in the small changes and putting them in, and then the appendices part, otherwise I think you'd have to try to adopt them with specificity, which I don't think we want.
I think you can have a caveat that it was presented to the County Board. I worry if we vote on it that it's endorsing every comment on it.
Right, right.
Because what happens if you get back to the office and you have a large document from another entity? I think having an appendancy which would just state how and when you received it, and it's not necessarily contingent on, it's a comment received.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I would, this is the first I'm seeing this language here, and I don't, because it's an, I'd like to be able to spend time on the language. I don't know, I don't know, that one more week would hurt to adopt, if we're adopting an ordinance, I want to know what I'm adopting, and I want to be able to read this better.
So just a clarification from, for Brian though, the 2045, as it was on the agenda, because it doesn't say ordinance 22-2, is that a problem? Or, I mean, basically, I was under the understanding that in order, for us to adopt this was essentially adopting an ordinance?
Right, I don't think, not putting down the specific number is not a problem. I mean, if you want to move forward today with adopting, and that motion is made, that could happen if it's tabled, and that'd be fine as well. But I don't, having it written that you're going to adopt the comprehensive plan...
I'm fairly, I'm not going to, this is just me personally, I, the statute is listed in the memo that was in the agenda, so there's nothing more in the ordinance that wasn't in. But if board members feel differently, that's, I'm certainly open to an action.
I haven't even read this. We're adopting an ordinance I haven't read. Unless you want to take some minutes, take some time to allow us to do it here, I just don't, I don't know that one, the difference a week makes. I, if I'm going to adopt an ordinance, I want to be able to have the time to read it. I fully support what's been presented. I fully support what's been presented.
Well, go ahead and read it because I feel like the comments that we've had, based on your memo and the comments in the, you provided us the comprehensive plan a number of weeks ago. I feel like that was all covered in here. But I'll read it, and if we'd like to table, then the board can act. Ordinance number 22, 2022-2, an ordinance adopting the 2045 Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. Whereas the county of Clay, state of Minnesota, is a statutory county duly organized and existing under Article, is that 12?
12.
Thanks, of the Minnesota Constitution. And whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Chapter 394, and specifically 394.21, the county has the power and authority to conduct and implement planning activities. And whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Chapter 394, specifically 394.23, the county has the power and authority to prepare and adopt by ordinance a comprehensive plan to promote the healthy, safety, health, safety morals and general welfare of the county. And whereas, development of the comprehensive plan was drafted in partnership with the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Council of Governments with the input and direction of the Study Review Committee and the Clay County Planning Commission. And whereas the comprehensive planning process included significant opportunity for public input through surveys, public meetings, and focus group meetings. And whereas the Clay County Planning Commission recommended the 2045 Clay County Comprehensive Transportation Plan to the Clay County Board of Commissioners for approval on March 15, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the county of Clay, state of Minnesota, hereby adopt the 2045 Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan to serve as a guide for future development and as the basis for establishing official controls in Clay County. If the board would like to table that, I'd need a motion. Otherwise, I'd look for action in some capacity.
I don't, I don't know that it would need to be tabled because it was never on the agenda. What was on the agenda was just a transportation plan update, a comprehensive plan update. I, I don't know if there's anything to table. I just think, you know, I just think we could formally put it on. I, the language, as I, as you read, I don't have a problem with, but, you know.
What is the requested board action from the board?
I will move approval of ordinance number 2022-2.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the ordinance 2022-2 as presented, which is an ordinance adopting the 2045 Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan by Commissioner Kaylee.
I'll second that, but I do want to indicate there's a typo in paragraph three. Healthy should be health.
Commissioner Ebinger seconds the motion. The note is, the item is noted. Commissioner Kaylee, does that?
Yes.
Approve. Further discussion? Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote of this, please. Commissioner Kaylee? Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Thank you. The plan does pass. We appreciate the work that you've all done on this. Thank you very much. And I would hope that this, as you noted, because it's so large, it will take an amount of time to go fully online, but hard copies are available at the government center for folks to address at any point if they need, correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. And as, also, the, any further comments that we may receive on this, either today or in the coming days? I think to make sure that they're included in the same manner as the comments earlier discussed would be appropriate. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners?
Can we take a quick break? Justin, do you mind while we pull those up?
Yeah.
All right. How about a five-minute break? We'll come back at 9:50. So I just want the public to know there's some conversation in terms of what was advertised versus what was just voted on in terms of the ordinance. I think that I would like, Matt, you to work with Brian to make sure that what we just voted on was properly advertised and voted upon. Should there be any issue, I would like that to come back on Tuesday.
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, I'll.
Because it, it sounds like there's a understanding that what was advertised was correct, but I just want to make sure. And if there's anything that has not, that was not done properly, known by Thursday so it can be advertised. Understood?
Okay.
Okay. This morning, the next item on the agenda is highway department items. We have our interim county engineer, Justin Sorum, this morning. A bid opening for a mill and overlay on CASA 31.
Yes, so this is the project that goes from the South County line, nine and a half miles north to CASA 10. It is a very aging roadway and in dire need of a mill and overlay, so this is going to be a really good project. We do have federal funds on this project as well, and we did receive five bids for this. No paper copies, they were all online. There were no addendums on the project, and each bidder does have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. The engineer's estimate for this project is $2,424,322.30.
Justin, in terms of that estimate, certainly we've seen estimates, you know, be outdated within just a number of days. When was this engineer's estimate?
Last fall.
Last fall.
So with the federal funding on the project, we were required to put in an estimate a lot sooner than a normal state aid project, and the increase in oil hadn't really been seen at that time yet. So the first bid is from Dunick Incorporated. Their bid is $3,339,788.72. The second bid is Mark Sand and Gravel Company. Their bid is $3,056,149.42. The third bid is Knife River. Their bid is $2,860,383.20. The fourth bid is RJ Zaverlin Sons Incorporated. Their bid is $2,815,85.13. And the final bid is Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid is $2,775,384.17.
Justin, had you done an internal estimation on the project recently?
Not recently. We did one when we did the five-year plan about a month ago, and it was 2.5 roughly. So it is a little bit higher. Our five-year plan shows 2.2, $2,565,000, which this bid is about 8% higher than that. We are showing at the end of this year a state aid balance of little over $1.6 million. So I think with the little over $2 million in federal funds that we did receive for this project, I do think it's still doable and important to get this one done.
Board questions?
And I did look at prices kind of compared to what we did last week, and they're pretty much the same as far as mixed price goes.
Is this the, Justin, is this the one that went through the, so the federal money, is that went through the STIP program?
Yep.
And our turn on the STIP, as explained, we get.
It doesn't.
And then we don't get any for a while, right?
Yep. We won't get another probably federal project for paving for another five or six years.
You know, I know this is, it's getting up there to the point where sometimes you have to second-guess whether you should delay it or not, but it doesn't make any sense to delay this at this point in time.
No, and just the state aid balance that we are showing, I think once this construction, once the bids are done, as a highway committee, we could look at what bid prices came in, and if we have to adjust the five-year plan a little bit, we can. But I think the federal projects especially are crucial to get done.
Well, and I agree with you. I think, I think we, you probably should go back to the drawing board with future projects and maybe incorporate this type of average cost versus.
Yep, I would agree.
Even then, I think, you know, going to the future, who's to say that these oil prices are, you know, maybe they're not done doing what they're doing, but. And I, and I do want to point out that within our five-year plan and the dollars that we talked about, we were very conservative with our state aid allotment.
That's correct.
That we applied. So our state aid allotment was probably.
In future years, it's $300,000 less than it is this current year.
Right, so.
1.2 million roughly.
You know, so as long as we continue to get this year.
Yep.
That particular project would be made up just in, in that extra state aid that we did not.
That's correct.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I would move the approval of the little bit of, it looks like it's Central Specialties.
Yep.
Subject to any.
Errors in the bid, and then also since it is a federal project, it does need office of civil rights approval.
Okay. I would include that in my motion.
Motion to approve the awarding of the bid to Central Specialties from Commissioner Campbell, contingent on internal review for errors, and then also a outside review. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion? Certainly appreciate the ability to start chipping off some of these much larger projects in outer Clay County. I know this one really is a haul road, and after the rain last week.
Yep.
Was a little dicey. Are you, in terms of, how are we planning on, is this a May project still yet? When do you expect them to start?
With the federal projects, it does take a little bit longer for all the approvals to happen. I would say it wouldn't happen in May. The earliest the contractor could start is June.
Thank you.
But there is a completion date of September 2nd on this project.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Next piece is a request to fill a vacancy for a maintenance worker.
Yes, so a couple of weeks ago, we got notice from one of our maintenance workers that he is intending to retire effective July 15th. With the difficulty in finding Class B licensed drivers, we'd like to start advertising immediately.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Camp, or Ebinger?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any backfill on this?
No. We don't have any variable hour employees that would be eligible to take this position.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is granted.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then I did talk to the contractor that won the CASA 12 project, and they intend to start next week.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee, for presenting earlier on that. Did you have any other items?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
On Tuesday, the 10th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We did talk about some joint work on the Georgetown Bridge project that's going to go on. We had shop updates on, on the construction projects. We did receive word that the cold storage estimate that's involved, that's with the MINDOT.
Yep.
Is a week late, so we'll probably be hearing what those estimates are this week. And then we had some additional conversation about the Holly Lanes request, and I know that, I think our position was we just wanted to make sure our county attorney was okay with any potential liability issues regarding that, that proposed blocking off of those parking, okay?
Just now, we're just, extra time on that, so we're going to work on that.
Okay, thank you. Good. Our county attorney will be reviewing that. Okay, then, that afternoon, we did have a conversation amongst our Minnesota members that dealing with dispatch, plan for future dispatch. We had discussions about, Cass County is the, going to be the fiscal host, and they had a request from us wanting to know what our preference was. If they were to own it, do we want to invest upfront, or would we want to become part of a potential lease option over a number of years and what have you? And so we met, we met, Mayor Carlson was in attendance, Dan Molly, the city manager, was in attendance, our sheriff was in attendance, Police Chief Monroe was in attendance, and we had the fire, acting fire chief, his name escapes me right now.
Wallen.
Yeah, yeah. Wallen, yeah. Wallen was there, and then Commissioner Ebinger was, joined us via phone, and then we also had Stephen. And our, our feeling from the Minnesota side was that, that we would rather put our capital investment up front on that project. And we had several discussions, and, and right now, typically it was, we've always used the MetroCog formula, and at one, it wasn't too long ago that between the city and the county, we're at about 28%. That number, this past time, this, after this past census, our number is somewhere between 25 and 26%. And so we talked about submitting a deal to Cass County, saying that we are interested in buying in upfront, and we suggested that our, an appropriate percentage would be 20%. You know, so we kind of, we kind of ran that by, through our county administrator and Dan Molly, to Robert Wilson at Cass County, just as it, obviously, it would take both the city council and our county board to finalize that, but as, in terms of what we felt internally as, as what our intent would be, would be to, to go that route. Obviously, this would be another item that would be eligible for ARPA funding, so we could, we could consider that. There's a potential that our share could be absorbed, potentially using ARPA funds, and if the city has available ARPA funds, it could also apply towards it. We could probably see our local investment in the capital piece be funded without a need for bonding. So it's, it's an update right now. Obviously, those are, that's the, and I think we were, well, we were unanimous in, in all of us present in terms of that would be the best fit for us, the most likely option. So that 20% was, is out on the table, and we'll, we'll see where that goes, but we believe that that's, that's fair. When you consider what the future growth is going to be, obviously, we talked about how the growth of Clay County, but you got Cass County and Fargo and West Fargo and Horace growing tremendously, too. So our percentage over time might actually end up closer to that 20%. So that, so anyway, so that's, that's the update on that. And I guess from that standpoint, I do think, Steve, I would like to see us maybe in And I guess, from that standpoint, I do think, Steve, I would like to see us maybe include some discussion with our ARPA committee about the potential use of, of those funds, just so that we can have that discussion early on in that process. Then, let's see, on Thursday, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Fergus Falls. Not a whole lot to report there. In terms of the insurance, they did receive three new school districts that are going with Lakes Country for, for their health insurance program, which is, it's a, it's good for the co-op. We did receive some strategic plan updates from the, from the executive director, as well, as well as his goals for 2022 and 2023. And then there continues to be some property updates regards to some property that they own in Moorhead. It's ongoing discussion. We did have a landfill review committee meeting also that morning of the 12th. And no progress is being made yet, but at least there's, there seems to be more dialogue going on. And I don't know, Steve, you want to add to that in your report, but our Commissioner Mojo was also part of that discussion. We had a PIC committee meeting, and that was the, pretty much the extent of that was dealing with our action today regarding the medical services for the Regional Juvenile Center and the Correctional Facility. Yesterday, we had a transfer station construction meeting. And it's finally drying out, and they're making, making some headway in terms of the discussion that we had last week when construction engineers was here. We did, we did formally ask construction engineers to put on paper what they, what they feel is appropriate, act of God conditions, and, and applying the appropriate dollars to that for a starting point in our discussions that we had with them last week as, as a board. We did, then we were able to take a tour, and we walked out and saw what was going on, and it's really, it's pretty impressive when you get down in there and, and see what, what's happening there. And I, I think the entire community is going to be very pleased with how that operation is going to work. Let's see, oh, and then Commissioner Gross and I were able to go over to the Highway Department and congratulate Brad McDonald on his retirement. He's been with us for a long time. He was one of those unsung heroes that deals with all of our signage that we have throughout the county, putting up signs, taking down signs, putting up temporary flood barriers, on and on and on, and day in and day out. And I sat and talked with him, and I've never seen somebody who enjoyed his job, and talked about how he enjoyed his job, as Brad did, and, and he's going to be missed. But anyway, congratulations to Brad. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday, the 10th, Commissioner Campbell covered the Minnesota Partners for the RRD C meeting. Was a good discussion. I just have a couple of observations on that. One of the issues in the entire history, and I, I guess I was involved with the RRD C for about two-thirds of its history. Commissioner Wayland, my predecessor, was actually involved in the inception of the idea. And the concept has been to keep the partnership together, and everybody's got to have enough skin in the game to where you want to stay together as partners. The, to that end, as the demographics on both sides of the riverage have changed a little bit, and it looks like the future is going to change, we've become flexible in changing the Board of Governance's vote from an even 4-4 to a 4-6, favoring North Dakota because of the increase in their population. And now that we're looking at the, our share of the capital cost putting in a new dispatch center, I think it is the same logic that we need to apply that would indicate that 20% is a reasonable amount for the Minnesota Partners to proffer as a, as our contribution. But great conversation with Moorhead. I think everybody's on the same page on, on moving forward with funding. And there were issues with that at some, some point a couple of years ago. I think everybody is assured now that the Minnesota and North Dakota Partners want to stay in this and work on this project together, so it's exciting.
Can I just add to that if I can?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
I know, one of the other things that we did talk about, and Commissioner Ebinger and I, and our Moorhead partners who are part of the group, I think we're going to strongly propose and support the idea that a backup location for a new dispatch center be on the Minnesota side. We think there's, there's, there's good, solid reasoning behind that, including the fact that we're part of the Minnesota Armor System, and a lot of those funds come out of Armor, and I think that would be a wise choice for us regionally to consider that. Thank you.
Yes, Sanford Health, which appears to be, I don't think there's a formal commitment, but they're part of this project. And they're also part of Armor, which is an interesting little fun fact. We've got, in North Dakota, Cass County and Sanford Health are both part of the Minnesota Backbone Communication System. So I think it's, it's a good mix on this. Following day on Wednesday, I virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communication Board slash RAC meeting, joint meeting. A lot of regular business. Just one thing I'd like to point out, there are over 30 members of this committee. And when we, you do it remotely, which this is, takes place in Thief River Falls, and a lot of the participants are remote, I was driving on a family emergency and did it with my hands free. The state of Minnesota really needs to update remote meeting laws. We had, we were able to do things under the emergency clause during COVID, but we have roll call voting necessities in our meetings. And when you have 30 participants and two-thirds of them are remote, it gets really awkward. We managed to get through it. It took two and a half hours. But, and I learned to differentiate between the turnoff and the mic mute on my remote in the car. So, but this is something I think if, if commissioners are experiencing similar problems with some of their meetings, maybe something we want to talk about for the next session on revising some of the remote, remote meeting laws that we've got in the state of Minnesota. It's great we can meet in person again. I love that. That's preferable. But I think remote meetings are going to be a back to life here in the future, and we need to streamline them a little bit. We did have a pretty extensive conversation. Coming up shortly, there's going to be a requirement for all public, or law enforcement, not public, public safety, exclusive of VMS and fire departments, but law enforcement, police, and sheriff communications to meet a federal standard on encryption. Otherwise, you will not be able to communicate with any federal agents. It's border, customs, US Marshal, FBI, all of those entities would require that if you communicate with them, you've got a standard of encryption that's been identified by the federal government. To that end, and for grant funding and for a lot of equipment replacement, the board has been trying to get a comprehensive inventory from all the people, all the entities in the Northwest of what radios they have, what can be encrypted, what can't, and it's been kind of a slow process. So we had a long talk about how to encourage counties to get in there and get their, their stock inventoried and identified. And I am happy to report that thanks to Brian Zastapil, who's our technical consultant for the entire region, but he's also the technical director for the RRD C, and of course, Gabe Tweetin with Sheriff's Office. We are on, on, we're one of the, we are the biggest entity in the Northwest, and all of our equipment has been inventoried and submitted. So kudos to them. There was some discussion on next generation 911 grants. They are closed, but there's some other funding sources talking about maybe looking at grants there. Other than that, it was pretty much deep technical stuff that, being, being a board member and not on the rack, I kind of understand, but it's always good to hear how the nuts and bolts work. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last week, I attended the Wild Rice Watershed meeting. Really good, vibrant discussion on all the projects going on. Certainly, there's some flooding that we're all experiencing, but even more so a little bit farther north. So there was discussion in terms of drain tile adequate, with adequate with the pumps. And they did address the board elections. They will stay similar to what they've been in the past. And then did have a vote on a citizens advisory board. The board was quick to make sure that they were addressing all areas within the district. The next day, I attended the Clay County Landfill Review meeting with Commissioner Campbell. Just good discussion on that piece, certainly frustration on our part for a project that's almost two years past its completion date, and we have yet to have some functioning items of that. Certainly, we're continuing to have dialogue. We did request that the president of the company be brought in to those discussions to make sure that all hands are aware of what is going on. There are some additional items in terms of the access road is experiencing a little bit of sagging, going up to the top of the pile. Engineers will look at that going forward. We did have the PIC committee meeting to discuss the RFP item that we addressed earlier on the board. Thanks for this board's understanding, and certainly excited about moving forward with the new company that received the little bid. Further discussion with the sheriff in regards to so many retirements, as Commissioner Campbell had addressed earlier, making sure that he's addressing the needs of that department with understanding those retirements that are coming forward. And that afternoon, I attended the SWCD meeting. Good board reports. There was a long discussion on the MPC A item. Thank you to Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Kaylee for having those initial meetings to address a timeline for mitigating that issue. We did receive a letter from MPC A that kind of highlighted those steps going forward. I forwarded that because it had not been given to our administrator yet. I did forward that to Administrator Larson. The MPC A is requesting a first check-in by June 1st with, and with the county and SWCD. I believe Commissioner Campbell, because now it falls within the SWCD umbrella, you had requested that Commissioner Kaylee and I be part of those discussions. I did ask Steve on Friday to reach out to MPC A. I know that everyone's schedules get filled up, and I think it's really important that we have an in-person meeting specifically for this first one so that Craig can provide the, the reports and have MPC A walk us through how that would be entered so as to not have any mistakes. So we'll wait for MPC A on that. Other than that, they are busy planting trees. The challenging spring has caused a little bit of a delay in planting those, so they're working hard to make sure those are planted. Because of the escalating fuel prices, they're, the board did support increasing a slight nominal fee for the larger, or whenever they're bringing the planter out. I think it was no more than $20, but the pain at the pump is real for all of us. And then they, they talked about the county budget funding request that, I believe Steve sent a timeline out to department heads last week, talking about that. They highlighted the pollinator night and had good success with that. They were happy, since the last pollinator night was in September, to have such great input on that piece. And talked about the rural city meeting and the NRCA, or NRCS Local Work Group meeting. I continued to advocate for increased discussion between the NRCS and SWCD offices. They share a wall, but sometimes because they're different jurisdictions, they don't often have opportunities to talk things through. So I requested there's some additional conversation there. And then I also attended the owner contractor resource recovery meeting yesterday. I did have some connection issues, so I apologize for that. But certainly, they're doing the best they can with the environmental challenges. I did also support them coming to us with a list of items that they felt were out of, out of their control. And there's, the conversation needs to start somewhere in terms of addressing those issues. But I believe Commissioner Campbell took some photos that are available from the tour yesterday, and that facility is, the skeleton is up, and it's fun to see how that is transpiring. And certainly, because we're coming out of trash week with many of our small cities and our larger one, it's exciting to see how that will be used hopefully next year. The only other item I had is to note that file, the filing period for county offices is today through the end of the month. And tomorrow, we are slated on the calendar for a fire and EMT press conference at Dilworth Community Center. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking. That's been covered in detail by Commissioner Campbell. Also participated in the regional dispatch discussion with our Minnesota Partners. That's been addressed. Last Wednesday, our county management group actually went out to the Clay County Sterling Water, and we received an update from Kevin Kastenberg and his staff on the planting of the tree process. It was a very, very interesting tour, and so we appreciate Kevin and his staff hosting us for that meeting.
I heard you didn't want to come back to the office.
It was a beautiful day and a beautiful location. So on the 11th, I also had a conversation with Lori and Darren on the DMV discussions. The 11th also, I followed, had a follow-up discussion with Robert Wilson in regards to the, the RRD C discussion that Commissioner Campbell spoke about and Commissioner Ebiger. Also, on the 12th, participated in the landfill project review. Again, that's been addressed by both Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. Again, we'll continue those, that dialogue with the hopes of getting to the end here sooner than later. On the 12th, we participated in the PIC, which has already been addressed. The 13th, I talked with Kathy McKay and Rhonda Porter in regards to some different issues within their departments, PIC items that will be coming forward at a later time. On the 16th, also participated, stopped out for Brad McDonald and celebrating his 23-plus years within Clay County. And also participated in the Resource Recovery Owner, Owner Meeting. Would just note, the legislative session is, is scheduled to end on the 23rd by statute. The, we're going to be having a AMC webinar. I think Commissioner Kaylee mentioned that last week, that you can register if you're in need of that link. Could certainly get that to you. Again, we had some good news last week. The, the forecast of revenues in Minnesota showed an additional $1.1 billion. And so we, we had some positive information there. We also heard that there's a tentative or broad agreement on, on, from the, from the governor and the legislators as far as a budget. We're going to have some, about $4 billion in tax relief, another $4 billion in education, safety and healthcare. And really, that's the framework, and the committees are going to be working, working through that this week of what that exactly will entail. And so with that, I think that concludes my report.
Okay, anything else? Brian? Rita? Anything? All right, we adjourned.